Good evening, I call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please also note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha.comedy.org site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, April 29th at 5:00 PM. In the event of the appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, May 14th at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. First on the agenda is anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the March 25th, 2019, meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any planning commission member wish to have any item removed for discussion? Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff or the audience. If a member of the staff or audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the March 25th, 2019, meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 19-17 to transfer one building eligibility on the west half, southwest quarter, except the Rye and Ex Trail 1, Cure Guards Edition, and the east half, southwest quarter, north of RV and Track 1, Jacobson Second Edition, from the northwest quarter, southwest quarter, to the southwest quarter, southwest quarter, all in Section 34, Township 101 North, Range 47 West. Okay, we'll remove that to the regular agenda, okay? Item number three, conditional use permit 19-19 to exceed 3,600 square feet of total accessory building area, requesting 3,964 square feet on the property legally described as Annie's Track 1, Peterson Sub, Section 34, Township 103 North, Range 49 West. Petitioner is Jonathan Pumland, he's also the property owner. Location is 25527 475th Avenue, and that is located approximately four miles north of Sioux Falls. Item number four, conditional use permit 19-20 to allow storage units on the property legally described as Tracks 2 and 3 of Open's Edition in the west half, northeast quarter of Section 1, Township 103 North, Range 50 West. Petitioner is Lance Warren, Performance Property Management. He's also the property owner, 47165 250th Street, located approximately two miles west of Baltic. So, we are going to remove item number two to the regular agenda. I need a motion to approve item number one, three, and four.
So moved.
Ever?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes on item one, three, and four. And we will remove item number two to the regular agenda.
Good evening, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. Item number two has been removed to the regular agenda, and that is a conditional use permit 19-17. This is to transfer one building eligibility from the west half of the southwest quarter, oh sorry, from the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter to the southwest of the southwest quarter of Section 34. This is for property that's located about two miles east of the Grand Falls Casino. It's right on the state line, so everything on the south side is going to be in Iowa. This property is on the north side in South Dakota. So, to give you a brief explanation, the applicant, Earl Grimias, is requesting to move a building eligibility from the north parcel down to the south quarter, quarter section in order to better utilize the, there's an existing, some existing trees, and it also is along a paved highway, so I think it is better used along, or he felt it was better used along the, to be placed along the state line, which is a paved county highway. So, as you know, there are several issues we look at. There are no feedlots in the area. The approval of the building eligibility wouldn't increase the building density because we're just moving it one eligibility from one quarter section to the other quarter section. There is adequate infrastructure there. It's on a paved road. It would meet the parking requirements once the building permits issued for a house. And, one of the other areas we look at is, is it going to cause a nuisance? And, it shouldn't cause a nuisance because you're really just building, you're moving the building eligibility in this case, it doesn't really deal with a specific use. And then finally, you are to look at, how does this meet up with the comprehensive plan? And, how does it affect the health, safety, and general welfare of the public? It could be said that the public's going to be better benefited because it is going to move a building eligibility onto a better infrastructure. So, that's one thing to consider. It still meets the density zoning. We're only going to have one house per quarter, quarter section. The property to the north would not allowed, wouldn't be allowed to be developed. So, given that, staff's recommending approval of the, of the transfer of the building eligibility and recommending approval of conditional use permit 19-17, and with the one condition that a right-to-farm notice covenant be placed on the deed prior to a building permit being issued for the single-family residence that would be built there. And I do have a couple of pictures for you that we can go over. So, here is the, you know, I'm standing at the, basically the intersection, and you can see it sort of slopes off to the northeast there. And, this is looking straight east continuing. You can see the trees and the shelter belt, and then this is basically the farmland that's moving from. This is looking back the other way, west towards, back towards the casino. And that's, the pictures I have, right now it's basically an empty field. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Doesn't look like any at this time.
Okay.
Is a petitioner here? Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address this item? Will you please come forward and state your name and address?
I'm Jen Mulder. I'm actually Roger and Dana's daughter. I live in Sioux Falls, but I'm representing them in their 487-22268 Street. The farm directly to the east. Of those pictures, when he's saying existing trees, that is not on his property line. That is actually my parents' shelter belt, and it is set off quite a ways from their fence line is where those trees are. That property naturally slopes down in his waterway for all the farmers around there. All the way to the north where he farms runs all the way through there, across the street, into Iowa, and it all goes downhill. That four acres that he wants to move the housing to, he's already put a for-sale sign on, and I called Heck Realter to see what they were doing, and they did not know that he was intending to move that stuff around and do this type of stuff, so they say. And he's also stated that he wanted to use that land for his son to build a house. Our biggest concern is that it's used for what it's being said it's used for. If he's going to sell it with a single home residential, fine, whatever. But we don't want to see any sort of businesses come in, or any sort of feedlots come in, or anything like that, because that four acres is right next to where they have pasture land for their horses. There's a stock dam there and a natural waterway that we're concerned about drainage. If they build a house there, is that going to disrupt the natural waterway as it is? I mean, it's pretty environmentally friendly through there. There's nothing that disturbs it, only the field that comes in. So our biggest concern is just to make sure it's actually what it's going to be intended for, and can't be turned into any sort of commercial type stuff.
Ma'am, did you say there was a for-sale sign on it already?
It was, and I called, and she took that sign down within probably an hour and a half of talking to me. Because when I had mentioned to her that he said he was going to build a house for his son, she's like, "Ooh, that's not the story he told me." And I'm like, "Well, you kind of got to watch him, he will..." Whatever. Not here nor there, but she was out there and took it down right away. So, I know there's a lot of stories floating around about it that aren't necessarily true. Being right up next to it, I mean, that's my future property potentially, that I'm concerned about as well.
Any questions for her? Thank you. Scott, do you have a comment?
We do, we do require, and the information's in your packet, we do require when someone transfers a building eligibility that they fill out a checklist. And if you look at that, he indicated it's a new house for a family. So, I only could go by what he provided me, and, and then also to answer their concerns about businesses and whatnot. If, so what, there would only be allowed to be a single-family residence there at this time if they wanted to somehow do a feedlot or an animal confinement unit. Well, it's already zoned ag, so they would have to go through the process for that. However, if they wanted to apply for like a conditional use permit for a business, they would be back before you asking for the conditional use permit, which we just, you know. So there is a hearing process, as you know, and I'm just letting the people that came to the meeting also know that there's a hearing process that they would have to go through. But regardless, the, it makes no difference when we, when we transfer these building eligibilities to, not to scare these people, but we're not going to put, we're not going to put a condition on there that it has to be for a son. So, it really makes no difference. He just indicated that it's for a son, but he could transfer the building eligibility and sell it to me if he wanted to, or anyone. So, that is the way it is.
Was he aware that he should have been here, or?
They're given, it's written, written notice that they're supposed to attend the meeting. If they don't, then they run the risk of having their item denied or continued.
Okay, I guess I'll close the floor.
Ma'am, I'm sure I'm not in sympathy with not showing up at the meeting. I've been here for the whole meeting. I, I think we should continue this also until we have the applicant here. So I'll make a motion to defer action.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made in second to defer conditional use permit 19-17. Allohs in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. We defer till next month. We'll move on. Oh, business, discussing the sign ordinance.
I have a whole nother PowerPoint for you. But I guess, well, it, oh, why is this not working?
You know, that's not working, this is weird.
This screen, this screen is not working right here. I can't see anything on it.
Go to a different room.
I have a big, long, boring PowerPoint for you, so I should say something, right?
While we're working on that, could I bring something up under new business?
I got the PowerPoint up, so.
Okay, well, we got.
Is it working here?
It is, no, it's not working there.
It's not working here?
It's working there, that's good enough.
Well, I had some notes to work off of, and I proceeded to forget them in the office. I'll try to wing it a little bit here. But, so, as we've been kind of working on a couple of meetings now, some introductory comments about the sign ordinance, and I'll perhaps have to email them back out to you. So, our sign ordinance touches bases with several parts of our ordinance, so it's not just one section. As you see here, there's actually five sections the ordinance touches base on. And today, I think, for interest of time, I'm just going to talk about the largest part that we'll be looking at, which is Section 16, the on-premise signs. So this is the, signs that are on the premises where a business is located. And I'm going to begin with intent, in part because that's kind of the, if we're going to be changing the ordinance, we want to make sure our ordinance matches up with the intent of what we say the ordinance is for. So, there are some suggested changes into the intent of the ordinance to aid in the traveling public to find locations of businesses for safety, so they can see where they're going. Also to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, kind of the general planning and zoning configuration of what we want to do for safety and public welfare. Communication efficiency. Some of the parts of the ordinance, as discussed previously, don't necessarily relate well to what needs to be seen. So we added some things here to add individual sign conspicuity, so you can see it out, from, pick out a sign from the next sign. So, and to prevent proliferation, so there's not so many signs you can't find the one you're looking for. And then also to preserve the right to free speech, which is a major part of why we're also reviewing the signs, because of some court decisions of recent. Then landscape preservation, to protect and preserve the aesthetic quality and physical appearance of the county, because that is a big part of what we're trying to do, accomplish with the sign ordinance. And then just some comments. As we're going through this, the reason why we're going through this in a slow manner is to just make sure that they fit with these objectives, to make sure that these changes are understandable and clear. If they can't be read by kind of a common person, just picking up the ordinance, not knowing how ordinances work, and they can figure out where they're, how the sign ordinance works is a way we should have it, make it as clear as possible. So if there's any suggestions on how to make it clearer, that's great. Now is the time to do it, or work on it in the next 20 years. Are there any ordinance that does not adequately address what, how signs are currently used? As you'll see in some of the next sessions, I'll get a little bit more into that. And are there any holes or ways that the ordinance can be abused? Because we don't necessarily want people finding ways around and loopholes through things. So in the first part of this, the ag district is where we're kind of putting a lot of changes into. And one of the changes is that, that common seed sign that you see in the end of field, corn, or beans, or whatever, has a specific spot in the ag district. But because it has a specific spot, it's also listed that you have to read the sign. If it says anything other than seed hybrid, we can't put it out there, which is, runs into free speech issues in the sign. So, this particular part of the section is trying to accommodate those seed signs while at the same time limiting the, like, the proliferation of other various signs throughout the county. And at this point, we're suggesting that you have one square foot for every 100 linear feet of road, which for a quarter mile is approximately 13 square feet. And I don't know, those signs are about two square feet, if anybody wants to help me out with that. You know, and, and if that doesn't work, then like I said, this is where you can tell me that we need more, we need less, to kind of work those seed signs. And then, the 16 square feet is a carryover from the previous ordinance, that you can, no one sign can be larger than that. And then 10 feet in high, because we don't have any height regulations in our current ordinance for that type of sign. Then other signs that we're looking at for the ag district would be wall signs. A lot of like Cleary buildings, or Morton buildings, they all have that little emblem in the corner of the building. By our definition of a sign, that is a sign. So this would kind of lead, kind of pave the way to allow those, so that way if we do have any sort of complaints about it, or something like that, we have it covered and our ordinance is allowable, with limitations on to this, that one square foot for every two linear feet of building, maximum size 16 square feet. Continue then to rural residential. Rural residential, as you see, has very little wording in it. As a current ordinance, is, that, all that's crossed out is changed. So then it goes back to wall signs. Rural residential do have a lot of freestanding, or buildings as well, that have that Morton sign on it. Or I have a photo of a Harley-Davidson sign on one of these buildings that could maybe fit into this ordinance as well, but it's the same language as ag district. Then freestanding signs, you'll notice on here that it's for multifamily housing and not for single-family housing. Single-family housing is limited to conditional use or home occupation that they would allow a freestanding sign on the property. Is there any questions so far? I'm going pretty fast.
Special use signs on that?
So the special use signs, part of the ordinance is listed as special use signs, and I'll get to there. And that's where the 16.05I comes from. So that's where that particular part of the ordinance is laid out for those signs.
Can I ask a silly question? Maybe I'm just way off. But you drive, especially in Iowa, you see them. These barns that have, the wife must be a quilt or something. What, how is that?
I haven't gotten there yet, because I would, I'm considering in addition to the ordinance, something that would maybe call it art specifically, as a separate part. Or, the other thing we could do is if we don't include art, typically what we have done is basically said that is not meeting the full definition of the sign, because it's not calling attention to any business or operation, like what the sign definition says. But, so you can get to it to kind of either two different directions when we get to that point, and I'll show you my definition for art here in a moment, in the special use sign section. Commercial signs, we're changing very little to commercial signs. One thing, that window signs is kind of italics. We have nothing in our ordinance about window signs. I haven't written anything about window signs, but there are signs that are on windows in the county. And it's, I guess, it's something, you know, how do you feel about it? For example, I don't want to call anybody out, but the safari bar. There's lots of, there's lots of windows along that, and the whole window is pasted with like animals. All right, well, since our, you know, it's a window sign. We could regulate it kind of similarly to wall signs, or like the city ordinance has percentage of the window. You know, somebody could abuse the ordinance and build their whole building out of glass, and make one big sign. Anybody have any thoughts about that? Or should I continue on? It's late. A greenhouse. And now, this is where we get into some of those limitations. I'm not, those limitations aren't protect, aren't proposed to be changed at all for projecting signs, wall signs, roof signs, those commercial type signs. Some little bit of a insertion of language that this is only pertaining to commercial industrial districts.
Flash by roof signs there, but we had that guy that wrote the word wine on his roof that was 10 feet tall and 30 feet wide, readable by low-flying spacecraft. I mean, is that legal?
So, if it met our size requirements, it would be. But in that, in that.
Our size requirements?
In that, in that case, he had like a 400 square foot sign. And if he was a commercial zoning, or if he was commercially zoned, he would only be allowed one foot for every linear foot of building. So he'd been maybe, maybe 100 square feet or 200 square feet for that house.
So, but if he painted a wine bottle, maybe that would be art?
There we get into kind of the oddities of sign, and what is calling attention to your business. In that case, I was suggesting that, no, wine is what you're selling. You're painting a product. I have a good picture of an example in our county that Wild Water West, if you've been there, has a very large mural of the park that shows water slides and people having fun in the park. It's a tough distinguish between that being a mural or a sign, if, because you could call it both.
It seems like a swap to me.
And what about, I'm sorry, I ended up not being here last month, but did you discuss names on roofs, like Johnson Swenson, you know, when they?
We did, last month, we didn't discuss anything, because there's not enough people here. But names on roof, if you were going back, that'd probably, like, you're talking about ag-bitten stuff. Part of this also hopefully will allow for some of those ag signs to be allowable. There are barns that have murals on them as well. You know, this, let's see. Right now, this only has wall signs. It does not list a roof sign as a viable option. If you wanted to paint a farm name on the side of the building, I guess you could, if it meets those dimensions.
We can look at roof signs, putting them in there.
And maybe that doesn't need to be there? I just, I know lots of people have them. And is it calling attention to a business, or is it genealogy? You know, this is my family history.
Century Farm, sure.
I don't know. That's the tough thing about signs.
Or several religious signs on barns, I see, from time to time.
Sure.
I'm a little bit reluctant about having some of that out there, just for the fact that, it's a personal preference, I don't disagree. But, I don't know that everybody has to read it, that's all I'm saying.
Well, you know, as you pointed out there, I guess it kind of puts us in that catch-22 is that we're trying to allow for seed signs. But now, because of how we don't want to get in trouble with denying somebody a sign that says whatever religion they have and putting them down the road, that is part of the, I guess, trade-off of, of what we're trying to accomplish with the sign ordinance.
Are we bringing this forward to the commission to adopt?
Eventually.
We'll have to have a public hearing here first, to amend this on the ordinance.
Let's get some of the intersection safety zones, just some kind of clarification of what that is. That's pretty straightforward, so I'll move forward on that. We have no part of our ordinance currently about electronic message signs, so like digital billboards. Currently, anything that is allowed as a, like a commercial business, we've been allowing to have as an electronic message sign, as long as it meets the other requirements. This would allow for some regulations on that, for like, making sure that it's not going to be flashing, that it's not going to be too bright, that the, the display is static long enough that you can read it, rather than distracting people from the road, trying to catch that, what did that say? Some of these parts, like here, here's the sign brightness. This is right out of the city of Sioux Falls. For an idea of how to regulate that, because we don't want them to be too bright. We also don't want them to be close to residential properties as well. So that's part of this electronic message sign area. Any questions about that? And only allowable in like A1 or residential, or, excuse me, A1 recreational, if it's with a, like another permit, like home occupation or a conditional use permit. I see Doug thinking very.
Oh yeah, I'm just thinking more in the city of Sioux Falls. I mean Harmondon Field, my gosh, with the scoreboards, how close are they to residential?
I can read my backyard in the dark when the lights are on at the farm.
And you know, you talk about light pollution, my gosh, you can read a book at our farm.
I love the sound of cheering and balls hitting the bathroom.
I know, I think it's stupid.
The, the brightness, or?
Well, just, you know, the, the scoreboard, you know, they're, they're within, what was it, three hundred feet of a house?
Yeah.
Hundred yards?
Boy, they must be pushing us though.
Hey, we, we also have specifically removed scoreboards out of this, so.
Now, is this tape, I mean, are we?
Yeah.
Poor Tony works as long as we do.
Now, here's the special situations, or the original special situations. I suggest removing in this entire part of the ordinance. Due to shopping centers, we don't have any, and I don't suspect we will get any. And it doesn't extend any special benefits to anybody. Then interstate, highway, interstages, and just moving it to a different part of the ordinance. So then here's the new special situations area. And this is where we try to get situations, that's why, hence the term. Where there might require a sign, but, and it's up to you to put whatever sign you want out there. For construction signs, in the past, it says specifically building contractors and the like. Now it removes that language out, so you can put up any sign you want. But it's only during a building permit, for example, that you have these building permit signs up. And then it gives you your, your sign area regulations. Automobile service stations, you got an extra twelve square feet. But we can't limit to you anymore to just your gasoline prices. You can, you know, or we can just say, deal with the two hundred square feet you have, and just remove that out of there, the ordinance as well.
Put along the interstate there, where they put the tall signs up?
Yep. I believe so. Neighborhood identification signs, some of this is making the signs of kind of consistent and standard, standard size. For neighborhood identification signs, that's for those signs that are beginning of a, of a new separation of, like Iverson Crossing would have their own sign. So they could have that thirty-two square foot. Rentner Corner, there is a sign for Storm Heights that has a neighborhood identification sign on the corner. And this would meet that, that definition. The city has similar things with this as well. Institutional signs, because the permanent identification sign did not sound right for what the purpose was. This is where you have the churches, schools, and that sort of thing. They also get thirty-two square feet. Give a building permit. Integral signs, which would be part of the building, that is a permanent part of the building, built into like a rock or brick. Timpty trailers, not to call anybody out, has an integral sign that's carved into their rock. It's very large. But that, the intent is more the, the buildings where you see the year and the, the name of the building, or the contractor, or whatever. So it can project out into the future, many years, and see the sign.
We see farm, farmsteads have a lot of big rocks too, like, is that going to be, is that going to limit some of the, like, I know a few neighbors that have some big signs with their names on it and all that, you know.
Well, this is like part of the building.
Oh, part of the, okay.
Yeah, and I guess if they're going to use this as part of their barn, I don't know.
But kind of at the front of their driveway and stuff like that.
Sure, yep.
Big rock with their name on it. Is that going to be?
What about cemeteries?
What's that?
Cemeteries.
How big can we put? I'm serious, at some point it gets too crazy.
Sure. I guess the farmstead rock, I would put it back into that Ag District and, and how many square feet of road frontage you have, and that sort of thing. And not so much the sixteen square feet here. See, real estate signs, so instead of listing real estate itself, it's just when the property is actively listed for sale. Situational again. And then this is where we put the highway interchange sign that we have had in the past. Property rights signs, so that's your no hunting, no trespassing signs. I've moved banners into this section, because banners were previously in the prohibited category, which was odd, because they also did not prohibit them, it just listed the, it was weird. So now we specifically list when you can, how you can use banners on the property for twenty-one days during the year. Spectator signs, there's your scoreboards. Or signs that are towards like a football field, that you can't really see from the road, or directed towards the, the crowd. It's not intended to be a, a public, or a, out into the road. And then there's my proposed definition of art. If we.
It will come up. Philly Flare, Philly Flare, the, has a car there now. And so that, those are things we deal with, I'm trying to figure out, well, is that a sign? What are we going to call that when you have an old pickup?
Or just across the, the, the county border in the McCook, you have a giant head of a bull along the interstate.
Right.
That's art.
How about the, the old wrecker they had at Badlands Pond, you know? The helicopter on the roof?
Yeah, the Tyrannosaurus Rex north of Brandon.
All kinds of interesting things you, that, it's going to be, some things just are never going to fit well into anything.
I see this is all trouble.
Yeah, it's not the easiest thing to deal with.
And then the electronic message sign brightness, that could be moved into this part of the ordinance as well. This is a part of the ordinance, so it was always there, and this just changes a few things for like residential district. No flashing, no blinking. Portable signs, this is a, a touchy area, the sign code. In part because there's a lot of businesses, or businesses, people who like have parties that, or other events that are on their property, who want signage on their property that is not part of the commercial or industrial zoning districts. So lifting that regulation so that even other properties can have these portable signs for temporary use on their property would give them sixty days a year with notice and the usual that we'd have for commercial businesses as well. Unless people think that's too much leniency.
Do you really, do you think people are going to come up and ask graduation party here? Mike and Becky reception here?
Congratulations graduate.
I mean, because that's the signs you're talking about, right?
In part, also, let's say we get a tempor, I guess, if you have a temporary use or a an ag operation, or an ag tourism that maybe is down the road, that you can want to put up temporary signs in the Ag District. Would be another.
Firework stands.
Firework stands.
Portable signs that roll out from the firework stands.
Since, I know some of those are covered by conditional use permit too, but in, not in all cases.
You really aren't talking about like graduation signs, or find the party, or?
Not typically, no.
Thank you for clarifying.
Then the prohibited signs, not many changes, there's the banner language that prohibits banners, but then allows them for twenty-one days. Which I find kind of humorous. So that's why I moved it up into the other section of the ordinance. Maintenance and removal, nothing changed. Permit requirements, and this is the final part of the ordinance that lists out when a sign requires a building permit and when it does not. Just for clarification, for both those who are putting up signs and for staff on when to issue a permit.
Who's going to decide when a sign is onsite later, used, weathered too much? Who's going to? Is that a, is that a force on?
I guess, yeah, Scott.
Complaint type.
Yeah.
And all these things are just kind of giving you guys teeth to enforce something.
You know, it gives us that sixty days, where I give them a sign thing, and they can go out there and paint this something new on it. And then we're, all right.
Thank you for your work on that.
So.
Amazing work, really.
That's a lot.
Like to look at this again, or, I mean, there's some definitions too.
Oh yeah, here's the sign definition, and that's why, and I may, I'm suggesting some changes of that. I'm not going to go into any other definitions, but to just to show that this is a very broad definition. It can be interpreted that whole walls of buildings are, would be considered signage. Or it can be narrowed down as to, it, it, it's very broad.
Didn't the city of Sioux Falls have a big discussion about whether or not there was a mural on a building, whether or not it was art?
You know, and I, if, just Google search it, and you'll find all kinds of examples like that. Like the, apparently in Minneapolis, there's a mural of a squirrel on a PBR bottle cap going down a river, sponsored by PBR, but it was a painted mural, it was a one-of-a-kind art. So to determine whether that's a mural or a sign is kind of difficult.
So would you, would you like to advertise it for a hearing?
Yeah, or we can go over the other parts of the ordinance, the off-premise and the other parts in the future time, and we can discuss this as you think about it, digest it.
Kevin, how do you go about somebody that puts wordage up that may be offensive to people?
As of right now, we have nothing in the ordinance about offensive language or content. And there's nothing even proposed about it. That might be a question that we'll have to talk to at the, the.
Any other comments for him? Thanks for all your work.
Yep.
So should we advertise for a hearing in May, June, which you want?
May.
May.
Because we can have the hearing and we don't, we can continue the hearing, I mean, we can still act on it in June. If you're not comfortable, I mean, we can continue that hearing, but we'll advertise it and we'll start the process more formally now.
Thank you. New business, did you have something, Jeff?
Yes, Madam Chair, first of all, let me thank our staff here. Kevin and David and Scott, and of course Donna. And then we've got Tony, who's doing our technical work on the broadcasting. But I, I really want to thank those of you who are here on this planning commission, because really, you're doing it for nothing. And this is probably one of the most important jobs that county functions in, is, is planning and zoning. And for those counties that don't have it, I'm sorry for them. But, but you folks are doing this for chicken feed, and, which is not a commercial operation in my book. But, you know, we need to do better by you. And I just wanted to thank you all for coming in, rain and shine, calving and whatever going on. Thank you all for coming in every week, every month for these meetings.
You need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All is in favor? We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
Kevin, the reason I brought language offensive.